Out of town today and we'll be back in a week. First order of business is the city managers' briefings. The first one of those is the Fort Story Fire Station update.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, members of council, we've got a series of four briefings today and the first one's going to be Chief David Hutchinson. And I'd just tell you that, you know, the mayor continues to have quarterly meetings with our military installation commanders. And we just completed last week our quarterly update with Little Creek, Fort Story. Really pleased how this initiative that the fire department has first created and then has worked diligently with Little Creek and Fort Story to move it forward. And so today, Chief Hutchinson's going to give you an update.
Afternoon, everybody.
Welcome.
This is really just a quick update to let you know that everything is going very well. That we haven't run into any real roadblocks, nothing that we couldn't handle fairly quickly. On the first side, the Fort Story side, we're working towards a final agreement. Their public works department writes up the agreement and we've moved it over to legal, our legal, to take a look at. Shouldn't be any real problems because we already do the auto aid. This is just more us moving into the building. So we're just working through that. The next is a big one that's got to be accomplished, but the security cards, we thought at first they were going to, we were going to use our fire department, our city IDs, and the base changed that and they want us to use their security cards. It's, I believe it's called a CAC card, sir. That's going to be issued to all 500 of us. We're, Chief Cooper is working with their public works person and security that's going to make that happen for us. If we run into any timeline issues with that, we will obviously do the ones that are going to be, the firefighters that are going to be in there first. But we don't think we will. We should be able to knock it out before they get there. On our side, we've got the recruits are progressing through training. They should finish around the last day of April and then they'll be ready to move in. They won't physically be moving in. I don't foresee us putting any of the new recruits at the new station. But the holes that they will fill so that the firefighters can go to Fort Story will be happening right around May 1st. The engine is ready. We've got an engine that we're going to be staffing there where all the equipment should be in. We feel pretty certain by the end of March. So we're ahead there. Station alerting plan, redrawing up the district on how the runs are going to be exactly, who's going to go into what streets, you know, is 11, how far north is 11 going? How far south will 15? It would be engine 15, so how far south they'll be coming, the exact streets and all that's got to be worked out. One of the biggest things that we're doing to make sure that we have a smooth transition is we're handpicking the captains and firefighters that are going there. We understand this is going to be unique and we want to make sure that the guys and gals that are going there are very good at getting along. So that's, we're handpicking them. So that's happening. Like I said, we've already talked about targeting to move in is in May of 2018. So on the next one, one of the things that we did decide to do was is, we appreciate you all making sure we had enough money to make all this happen, but like the IT equipment and such things as the decon washer, et cetera, we're going to wait until they get in, have a couple of weeks, a month or so, to see where they want the stuff positioned, if they want to move anything, do that. And then we'll work through the base, through their public works, and make sure everything is approved. And then we'll be paying for the upgrades there with our IT equipment and stuff like that. And like I said, with the decon washer and stuff. So it's really just a quick brief to let you know that everything is going very well and we don't see anything getting in the way as of right now. So, any questions?
It's 15 people that are there?
Yes, sir.
So you say you've got 15 recruits. You've got more recruits than that, right?
Yes, sir. We had 30-some, we're at 28, yeah, right now. We've lost a couple, which is normal.
There's 15 people going to this one?
Well, there's 12, but with the way it works out to the point bodies, yes, it's 12, but with the leave spots, it makes 15. Yes, sir. Anything else? One thing I did want to, I wanted to share with you all, the mid-Atlantic region has lost, they've lost one of their 29-year veterans. He was running on the treadmill earlier this week and had a cardiac event and has passed away. And so we just wanted to mention that. And in true fashion, they're donating his organs. So I thought it was worth mentioning that they've lost that. He was a battalion chief. Bemett is how he said his name, and he was their chief fire marshal. So we're saddened by his loss and appreciate his effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hutch.
Next item is the Lake Edward Community Improvement Initiative. Andy Friedman and Melanie Coffey are here.
Yes, sir. We're going to present to you today an initiative that has got the support of the Lake Edward community and is going to make some improvements in your district, Mr. Jones. And it's kind of a combination and Andy's going to do the lead, but I just want to acknowledge Wells Fried, who's here with Andy, works for Andy. He is our code enforcement administrator and he's been instrumental in working through this because thanks to his efforts, it's a better place to live up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. So today, we're going to talk about a proposed set of improvements in the Lake Edward neighborhood. And to the extent that this meets with your approval, then we'll bring back an action item hopefully in March. So as Mr. Hanson mentioned, there are some issues in the neighborhood that the Civic League requested the city's assistance with. One of them was a parking problem. There's also some property maintenance issues. And as we always do, code enforcement was going out and citing, issuing citations and placing liens and doing cleanups. But it turns out that the property that we were addressing is not owned by an active corporation. The Lake Edward Corporation went defunct. There are no owners or members. And so there is no one to respond to our citations and the liens are not effective. We put together a multi-department group of staff to work on this issue, including Public Works Real Estate, Public Works Stormwater, the city attorney's office, Parks and Recreation, and of course, code enforcement. And we're proposing this plan for you to look at. The first set of concerns, as I mentioned, overgrowth, grass growing too tall, illegal dumping, inoperable vehicles parked on the street and in other areas. And so we identified four properties that are owned by the defunct Lake Edward Corporation. The first ones, Lot 1 and 2, are basically in the street area, but they're actually privately owned by that corporation. And they're used by the residents for overflow parking. And you can see the locations and the pictures there. And we would be regularly citing these properties, but of course, there was no one to respond to those concerns. The third one is a wooded area along West Hastings Arch. And that's basically just a place for illegal dumping. And Lot 4 is actually the lake of Lake Edward itself. So we've been, as we always do, we've been using a contractor to clean up the issues there, tow away cars and cut grass and so forth. And we've now placed liens over $37,000 on these properties, but there's no one to collect from because the owners do not exist. And the property taxes are also delinquent and the treasurer's not going to pursue collection or sale of these because the pursuit itself would cost more than he could ever recoup from the value of the properties. These properties don't have value really to anyone except a public entity such as ourselves. So I'm going to turn it over to Melanie Coffey of Public Works, who's going to talk to you about what the plans are.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, council members. I'd like to just go over the proposal that we've come up with, with this interdepartmental team that Andy mentioned. So this has definitely been a group effort trying to come up with some ideas for these. So I'll go through them each lot. First one is Lot 1. And this would include the city acquiring this property and then constructing a paved area with stormwater management that the residents could then use for parking. The total estimated project cost for design permitting and construction is $170,000. And the city would become responsible for future maintenance of that property. Lot 2 is the larger parcel. We're on the southeastern side and that's got similar improvements proposed as Lot 1. So the city, again, would acquire the property, construct the paved area with stormwater management, and it would provide additional parking, again, for the residents. So the total estimated project cost for design permitting and construction for this is $235,000. And again, the city would become responsible for the future maintenance. Now, since Lot 3 has kind of different resident concerns, it's more related to the overgrown grass and the dumping. So we propose a slightly different approach for this parcel. The city would acquire the property and then we would provide routine mowing of the grass area between the trees and the alleyway that's behind West Hastings Arch. And the lot would remain wooded with no physical improvements to the lot. For Lot 4, we are proposing first some initial improvements between the alley behind West Hastings Arch. There's a red line shown on the map and that would be a location where we would install guard rail. And that would be along the right-of-way to prevent vehicles that might try to park in that area from going into the lake. There's very steep banks on the lake slope in that area. And the estimated project cost for that is about $65,000. We've also identified future improvements to Lot 4, which is the lake. In some previous planning work that we've been doing for water quality for the MS4 stormwater permit, we've identified this lake as a potential project in the next permit term. We're meeting our requirements for this permit term, so that's why this is out a little bit farther. The construction of the water quality improvements would support both Chesapeake Bay TMDL and the local bacteria TMDL in this area. It's Elizabeth River watershed. The project would also address the areas of significant erosion along the banks with basically providing some fill to bring those areas out into the lake. Right now, they've eroded back towards the property owner's properties, especially along the southern edge where the townhomes actually above the lake. Before we move forward with the acquisition of Lot 4, we would acquire the easements for construction and maintenance through a dedication process with the property owners. And the total estimated project cost for the design permitting and construction is This, I'm sorry, and this is the image of the future water quality improvement where the blue areas shown along the banks are the areas where we have the steeper erosion. The blue dots in the center are proposed aeration locations. And then there are black and white dash lines at each of the corners of the lake and those are basically sediment trapping areas. And I've got another slide here to kind of give you an example of that. Basically, this is very similar to what we're proposing for the Kemp's Lake project that is currently about 95% design. So this is just a graphic that we had used at our initial public meeting for that project. And we would bring in that fill material that I mentioned earlier to stabilize the bank slopes and then we would be able to plant the wetland plants in those locations. And we'd also create those areas for sediment trapping. So on this particular graphic, those are the blue lines in the lake. Again, you're trying to trap the flow, the initial flow that comes into the lake to provide more settling, to remove pollutants. And similarly, it would include the aeration to the lake. And now I'd like to just go over the implementation plan. We propose to acquire Lots 1, 2, and 3 through a special commissioner process. And that would provide for the forgiveness of the existing taxes and liens that Andy had mentioned. And we'd perform the design permitting and construction while that acquisition process is underway. Following the completion of the acquisition process, we could go to construction. We'd also begin the routine mowing of the properties. Parks and Recreation has agreed to provide that additional routine mowing. The guard rail would also be installed in the right-of-way adjacent to Lot 4. And the total cost of these initial improvements, including the acquisition, is $470,000. The future implementation would be basically for that water quality improvement project that I mentioned. So first, we would start by initiating the process to obtain the easement dedications for the construction and the maintenance of the future water quality project. That would be more of a time, lengthy time process to complete that work. The cities, basically the city's acquisition of that lake would have to be conditioned on that dedication. So we've not included any, the acquisition cost that could be estimated for that area. It's just including costs of doing like the titles and the plats is all that's included in that. We would program the project for design, construction, and permitting, and the total cost of the future improvement would be the $2.9 million. And next, I wanted to go over our funding plan. So the initial improvements to inquire the lots for 1, 2, and 3, design and construct the parking, would be funded from the Traffic Safety Improvement, CIP, with design scheduled for one year and construction scheduled for the following year due to the acquisition timing. The installation of the guard rail and the additional mowing of the properties would both be funded through the operating budgets of Public Works and Parks and Recreation, respectively. And then finally, the future water quality improvement project for Lake Edward would be funded from the Elizabeth River TMDL implementation plan. We also put together a potential schedule for making this happen. The first step would be to obtain council authorization to acquire Lots 1, 2, and 3. That's a step that we mentioned coming back in March. We've been working with the attorney's office and Public Works Real Estate in developing the process. This would be the first time that the city has used that process to acquire properties. The special commissioner process is expected to maybe take about a year to complete, but it is our first time, so we're not positive about that timing. We'll begin design and permitting of the parking improvements while the acquisition's underway and expect to construct those in the summer of 2019. And then we also plan to begin the pre-project process to obtain all those easement dedications for the water quality project around the lake for the construction and maintenance of that in the spring of 2019 and basically going out to the public in advance of that construction happening for those parking areas so that we could kind of do both at one time. And then we expect this process will involve basically resident outreach. We'll have those plats and then we'll work on the easement acquisition. So in summary, the proposed improvements address the issues presented by the Civic League and reduces future code enforcement costs. The acquisition of the properties by the city will also allow for ongoing routine maintenance that's lacking right now since there's no ownership because of that defunct corporation. Future council action will be needed to acquire those properties. And no new council appropriations would be needed based on the funding plan that we proposed. The future water quality improvements also would support our MS4 compliance. So that's really helpful in this case. And I'd also like to mention too, just in closing, thank you for your time today, but we've also discussed these improvements with the Civic League as well. And Reverend Daniels represents the Civic League. He's attended today also. And they've been supportive of the proposed improvements. So we'd like to open it up for any comments or questions about the proposed plan.
Any questions from Melanie? John?
One observation. Project is fine. I'm somewhat troubled by the CIP project that we're using. I'd feel much more comfortable if we wrote a CIP project scope reflecting what we were actually doing and moved the money rather than using something that says Traffic Safety and Improvement where we're building BNP's and parking spaces. I'd feel a little bit better because the precedent somewhat bothers me. It's just a question of how you capture it and track it. That's just an observation. That's not something I wouldn't vote for, but it's just a concern because you can always get precedent creeps. I'm just sharing that. And my other one is looking to the future. I hope before we do the big improvements that we really have a baseline, because I've asked this question a number of times with other projects, that we know what the baseline water quality is before we did this project and what is it afterwards? Because I think we need to understand for what we're spending across the city, what's really changing? And how much does that change cost downstream? But that's my only two points. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Pam.
I'd just like to say that this is an excellent project and I've spent a lot of time in the Lake Edward Campus East community. And I'd like to commend Reverend Daniels for all of the work that he's done to really turn around the entire community there. And it's a, I think, something that all of us should be proud of in terms of the success story that's being achieved there. And so this is just another part of that and I think that we need to continue and keep up the hard work, Reverend Daniels. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Jam?
Going back just to the choice of the projects, is parking an issue? Is that why two of these are parking?
Yes, sir, it is. That's one of the neighborhood issues.
As opposed to being passive open space? Okay.
Correct, yeah. We had considered both options as an open space option with some minimal landscaping and maybe some timber guard rail around those areas as another alternate, but that's one thing that the residents are asking for is additional parking.
Rosemary, do you have a question?
I'm good.
Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Henley.
Lot 4, the lake project, how large is that lake? It's kind of big.
It is rather large. It has a rather large drainage area also, which is why we've identified it as a water quality improvement project. It's a former borrow pit, so it's really deep. So it's not an issue of, similar to Kemp's Lake, which is also a former borrow pit. So it's not a, no depth issue associated with it. But basically, for Chesapeake Bay TMDL compliance, this pond was not built to be a stormwater pond. So it wasn't designed with water quality in mind. So what the regulations allow is that if we do those improvements that I mentioned previously in the slide with adding the wetlands and the fill and dividing those areas off to settle and adding the aeration, we will basically improve the water quality functionality of that facility for all of that impervious area that it treats. So I believe that we were in the order of about 90 pounds of phosphorus removal with this particular project. So it was pretty significant.
Any more questions or comments?
Thank you.
Sounds like everybody's okay with it, so let's move ahead.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Melanie. Reverend Daniels, good to see you. Thanks, Andrew Wells. Appreciate it.
Next is the FEMA reimbursement fund.
Yes, so we're going to swap in the team here and...
I'm up.
You're up. So we're going to present to you an information brief and then you have a council action today on the allocation of the FEMA reimbursement money that we received for Hurricane Matthew.
Yes, sir.
All righty. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm obviously not Tony Alger. She couldn't be with us today. She had an emergency, so bear with me. I'm Phil Pollan, as most of you know. As Mr. Hanson said, today, we're going to talk about the FEMA reimbursement funds. And back in November, Tony presented to you the Central Beach District Drainage Project as an option for the $5.3 million of FEMA reimbursement funds that the city received. Today, I'm here to discuss with you another option that we think is better that includes three projects in Windsor Woods. So the city received a little less than $5.3 million from FEMA for costs associated with Hurricane Matthew. We're going to talk about that. And in this presentation, I'm going to briefly review the flood control projects in the overall $300 million program, FY18. And lastly, I'm going to discuss the three projects that we're proposing in a little bit of detail. Next there. So I apologize, you guys don't have this chart in your briefing package, but this is a chart that shows council-approved program in FY18 for the $300 million for 15 years for these seven projects. We just wanted to show you that as a means to show you the entire program. As you can see, most of the funding is allocated to the top six here with very little for the Central Resort District, $300,000. And next, Mike.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
If we go back to that slide.
Yes.
Those amounts were just sort of general amounts, right? I mean, we didn't do anything that commits us to those amounts for each of those projects, right? That was just a guestimate at that point?
That is very high level, Ms. Henley. Yes, ma'am. Now, we are moving out on delivery on a lot of these things in the very initial stages of design. But yeah, they're high level and they're being, the program is being refined as we...
Well, I just would hope that each of those areas doesn't at some point think that we're not doing what we promised to do at the beginning if they don't get that amount of money.
I hear you. I think we, you know, it'll be fair and equitable and we will...
So in May or June, we expect to be done with our assessment of the first three, Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the lakes. And we'd be coming in here with a major briefing to give you an idea of what the consultant has evaluated and to tell you with the full realization of whether or not the total amounts that we've allocated in excess of $100 million is the right answer. And the word refinement is a good word because, Ms. Henley, remember, we threw some number at you on Sherwood Lakes? And you can see on this, we've already taken that number way down because we found a much more cost-efficient and effective way to draw the lake down because the lake has the capacity necessary to withstand a Hurricane Matthew, but not everybody has that. We're going to have to put a lot of infrastructure in to support that.
But for example, I know so far from what I've been hearing in some of these presentations, and by the way, those seven around-the-city watershore, yeah, stormwater...
Briefings, yes, ma'am.
...briefings, I think, were extremely good. I got to a couple of those and have been to a couple of other presentations and every one, I learned more about. But I know that, for example, in identifying, I believe Dr. Battin calls it the hotspots, a particular sea level rise and some of these things that are going to be identified with these, this work that's being done...
Yes, ma'am.
...clearly identifies other projects that also need to be done. So just because somebody is not in that list doesn't mean that they're not going to get in that list.
That is absolutely correct.
So I just hope we make that plain.
We'll make that clear, yes, ma'am. All right, the next chart here just takes that one and just shows the Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, just these three projects, and shows the six-year funding for those. We just wanted to do that because although it appears that there's money in the Windsor Woods appropriated today, year one and year two, either that funding has already been spent on doing some improvements like dredging or either that funding has been, is otherwise spoken for. So the appropriating the $5.3 million that we're going to want to today to these three projects that we're going to, I'm getting ready to give you in more detail, we would be able to advance them further into that program because the money is just not there even though it shows it there. It's otherwise spoken for.
What do you mean by that?
Well, there's been 3.8 appropriated to date. Two, we got July 1 of 2017, and we're going to get 1 and 1/2 of July 2018. But we have spent, let's see, we've spent two dredging projects, about $4 million already. So out of that, 3 and 1/2, $7 million, we spent four in dredging. We've also spent another 1 and 1/2, or let's see, 1.6 in some design work for some of these. So I just didn't want to leave you with the false impression that, why aren't you spending that money? Why are you putting the $5 million there if there's already money there? It's just not there. That's just the program as it appears in the CIP.
Thank you.
All right, so this is just a map of where the Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the lakes is in relation to the city, showing the other flood control project areas. Let me go over the three projects in a little more detail with you. Tony presented this slide to you back in December at the last quarterly briefing. These are the three projects that were submitted to VDEM, the Department of Emergency Management, seeking a flood mitigation assistance grant, all in the Windsor Woods area. Unfortunately, we weren't, we were not selected, that project was not selected for the grant. But these projects total $5.3 million, which ironically is the $5.3 million, totally coincidental of the money we're getting back from Matthew. So I mean, that's one of the reasons why we see it as a good fit because the money matches. But these three interim projects will provide reduced street flooding in the Windsor Woods area, and I'm going to show you that, for the 10-year storm. So a little more detail. Now, why were those three projects submitted in the first place for the grant? Because they met all the criteria of the grant. They provide localized flooding control. They're compatible with the ultimate program of flood control measures. And they can be, they can all be under construction... program of flood control measures and they can be, they can all be under construction within three years of the application date. So, those were all three criteria that these projects met. Another thing I wanted to point out, though, that says here in the chart is, these are interim projects to the full overall. They're gonna receive some immediate benefit. They're gonna reduce street flooding right away, but they don't receive the full benefit until they're coupled with the other projects that we have planned, like the pump station, and I'll show those on another chart, the box culverts and full dredging. I mean, that's a multimillion dollar project that we have programmed, but it's just, these will be components of that, first components is the way to look at it. So, won't receive the full benefit until those others are implemented. So, let's go to the description of the projects. So, those other projects, this is the pump station up here near I-264, proposed, box culvert's going from Lake Windsor to Lake Trashmore via this failure creek. So, this first project is shown here in the blue. What is it? It's a piping system of about 5,000 linear feet along South Plaza Trail and Presidential Boulevard outfalling into this presidential canal, ultimately into Lake Windsor. And it will provide some relief of drainage or flooding in the streets along South Plaza Trail. Total project cost is 4.2 million. Next slide, Mike. Here's just some detail, I won't go over this, but these are the components of that 5,000 linear feet of pipe. If we receive funding that we're proposing in this action today from the FEMA, Matthew FEMA Grant here, we could begin construction in July 2020. Next chart, project number two. This project is about 1,500 linear feet of pipe in here you see in the blue and that will relieve flooding along Old Forge Road and Red Line Road. Again, $948,000. We could begin right away if we get the funding as approved and, next chart, Mike. January 2020 is when we could go to construction is what we're projecting. And the third project, this is 500, about 500 linear feet of pipe between Old Forge Court and Kings Point Road, provides some relief again along this street. $200,000 project, we could go to construction, next chart, Mike, in July of 2019. So, those three total about 5.3 million. And in summary, as you can see here, the grant was about $5,292,784. The three projects I showed you today are $5,349,000. We think these are three very good projects that can provide some immediate relief. They're a component of the ultimate project, so we would recommend council approve the appropriation of that 5.3 million FEMA money into the CIP 7-028 Windsor Woods Drainage CIP and I think that is, is in action later today.
Any questions?
Any questions, I will be glad to answer, please.
I have a question. Are, are the projects that we've done so far, and I'm talking about the immediate dredging that we've done and so on and so forth and the maintenance of some of the ditches, are, are those projects working?
Let's see, I have some of my drainage folks here today, Mike Monday and my director, Mark Johnson. I will let Mark maybe talk to that a little bit.
The answer is yes. When you, when you have a ditch system or a canal system that's silted in, say 75%, and you clean that out, you're gonna get more flow, more flushing action and you're gonna keep your hydraulic grade line down. So, yes, we, we're anticipating to see improved drainage system. If you notice with the canal systems, we do the canal systems, now we're talking about improving the, some of the pipe systems that tie into the canal systems. So, we're, we're working downstream up to upstream. So, we, we think we have a good strategy for Windsor Woods and we're progressing wherever we can.
I think so also. On January 29th, we were in the middle of about what was estimated to be a two-to-five year rain event and I went to Old, Old Forge Road at about 11:00 PM that night. I didn't see any pounding, I didn't see any, you know, water in the streets, which leads me to believe that we are attacking this issue and I think that the residents are seeing real results as a result of the hard work y'all are doing. So, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Henley.
I know that you are doing things and things are making a difference already, but there's still that perception out there that we're gonna be waiting 15 years before we do anything and I, you know, continuously have to answer that allegation. Is it possible for you to keep a running list of those things that have been completed and just update it for us maybe every month or so so we know how to answer the questions?
Yes, ma'am, and that's the idea of the, the quarterly briefings that we're gonna give you.
Still and all, and that, we, we kind of lose track of what's on, make it simple.
We'll do that.
John.
In that regard, because I, I think Shannon sees it more than I do over in Green Run, but they've been doing the dredging and the canals and working up there. I think what's missing is we don't have, because we did a tremendous amount of excavation of those canals and you go and look at how much stuff we're removing, had a much, some had less than a foot of clearance. What we, I think a great thing would to show if you had a metric or like a dashboard, you know, I think colors are always great, you know, you know, red, yellow, green's always great, but if you looked at those canal systems, they were red. I believe the ones that you dredged, if you, you went a little bit below the capacity, got down, increased the volume. So, if you were looking, we restored them to, I think, if I remember right, reading some of those descriptions, to the like-new condition, to their original depth, is that correct?
Correct.
I think that's true. I don't think people, if I go out and talk to them, I talk, hey, this is what we've done. I think we can go faster, but I think where we have done things, people don't realize that we went from red to green, we went from, you know, of the standard, we had 95% with siltation and 5% with drainage, now we have 100% capacity. And I think that kind of a metric that people are used to looking at, like the USA Today, it goes a lot further than words, the stoplight charts, but it does give people a feel, getting back to Barbara's point, is, hey, we went from red to green. We had, our heart only worked at 60% of capacity, we got a stint and now it's at 100%. But that's kind of like the, how people, but that's how people kind of look at everyday public work projects. So, if you can figure that out, that would be a great graphic. Not a lot of science behind it per se, but you know what you paid, what we paid for. That'd be good, I think, helpful.
Shannon.
Um, I don't know if you know this answer or not, but the three projects that we're talking about with this 5 million within two-year kind of timeframe, if we didn't have that 5 million, when were they scheduled to happen? How much time did we cut off for this 5 million?
It was at least four or five years, right?
Yeah, they...
We're still putting the whole program together, so we really didn't have them in, in estimated start time.
Well, well, I'll answer it. They, they would have been pushed out at least two to three more years. So, you're gaining, you're really gaining, I'd say, at least two years.
Pull up that appropriation chart. It's about at least six, six inner. That would be a six inner.
That's not the right screen.
I think I would add that earlier, they were the subject of a, a grant application and we were not successfully moving forward for some administrative reasons. I think it was our intent, Aaron, to put those back in.
Yes.
And so, we, we might have been successful in the next six months or nine months for, for that, to get that grant.
But we're still gonna be putting something else in for the next grant application, right?
Yeah, yes, and what we'll do is we'll work with Aaron, identify some other projects and submit some other grant applications.
The manager's got the chart.
So, $5, $5 million worth of projects. I, I think what Phil was trying to tell you is, we've got this money, we've committed to doing some dredging, we, we're, we're out there trying to do the low-hanging fruit, but it takes design to go in and tear a street up and figure out your, your pipe laying and all that stuff. He's doing the smaller pieces first and the big middle piece and then the longer piece will all get done and you're not gonna see that kind of money till out here year four. Well, what'll happen now is, he knows that if you, if you all, and you've all endorsed the second option, so I suspect that's probably your selection today, we'll be able to move that much forward and they can dedicate that 5 million to the next piece and the next piece and the next piece. We go after grants. We go after grants knowing we have a program and if we make the grant money, we're able to move this, you know, move that new grant money into the program and then take the money that you were gonna, that you appropriated to it or that you programmed and will appropriate to it and we can shift that to new jobs. So, at least year four, maybe year five. And so, you're moving this up at least two and a half, three, three years to get this in.
Well, gentlemen, you have a winner here because everybody's endorsed it.
Enjoy the conversation.
Thank you. Next item is the Sports Center PPEA interim agreement.
Yes, sir, and Deputy City Manager Ron Williams is gonna bring us back. We continue to work diligently on this and to move this project forward at the majority of council's request and Ron's bringing up his charts and a whole series of engineers and planners are coming through the door.
Evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. So, update where we are. This is informational. You do have one activity on your agenda this evening in the formal session and then you'll have a request for adoptance of an ordinance in, in two weeks. Reminder that we've gone through the processes of reviewing and interviewing and making recommendation for selection of the preferred design builder and operator. And now we bring ourselves this evening, actually, to a requirement in the PPA law that asks that there, a public hearing be held so that people can comment on the proposals that were submitted. And those have been posted online since October. But, and they were the three teams that submitted. And frankly, it is, it's a little peculiar activity because there's not a whole lot of detail, that's not confidential and proprietary. And so, what's posted online is what is available and open to the public, that's not proprietary to these teams. And so, it's mostly about who the teams were that were submitted. But that's the purpose of the activity this evening for that public hearing requirement. It's not a public hearing on the interim agreement per se. Of course, we made recommendation that we are bringing forward to you, the interim agreement that we've shared publicly for first on February 20th, the selection of design builder team with MEB, Clark Nixon and Hanbury. And then later in the month, we will, in March, we will bring forward operator interim agreement, which is a little unique that we haven't seen a, a counter or a consistent, another model that that's been used before. So, we're, we're taking a little more time to make sure that in the interim agreement, which is just interim, gives us the ability to do what we wanna do. So, highlight of the material terms of the interim agreement that you'll see on the 20th. We have gone over this, but essentially it's so that we get that preliminary design during this period, which will, should be executed by November, but the schedule that we have, if you've read the, the draft that we've posted at the end there, realistically, we do get to the point this summer with the ability of that early design that then gives the design team the ability to give us a guaranteed maximum price that then instructs the terms for the comprehensive agreement that we would bring later this summer. So, that's, it's not to exceed 2.33 million and that, the breakdown of that budget is, is in the interim agreement, the components of which, some of which is early site analysis. Part of the work, of course, is to solidify the determination of the site and then the components that we want in the project. We will also require during the interim agreement, similar to what we did with Dome Site last week, a public engagement workshop, once we have a new evolution of the concept that this team comes up with, with our input. The Eastern Sports Management, the operator, will be a key part of our, of our design team on the owner's side and will help with the input of that as we work through the 20-year relationship that we're looking for, for the, for the operator. We have been working, again, on the, on the draft terms, these are, these are kind of highlights that we have here for the material terms of that interim agreement. And essentially, it says that what we need to do is get to a 20-year operating agreement and that would be the vehicle for our comprehensive agreement. We're looking at a similar timeframe that it would be done by the fall. And in that, in that work, we do, because he is providing some of his technical input for the team and time in, in our design meetings, which will be regular and weekly for several months, we, we, we do have a fee associated that we're recommending for that. And then we'll work through pro formas, the staffing models and understand the, the operator engagement fee and the risk-sharing models. And then maintenance and upkeep of the facility will be a goal to work through in that operating agreement as well. So, the next steps are this evening, you will hear from the public, again, for the required public hearing to, to respond about the proposals that were submitted. And then the interim agreement will be before you for design build on the 20th and they would expect the one, the first, second or, or first or second meeting in March, that we would bring the operating interim agreement to you. That's it, yes, sir.
Any questions for Ron? Yes, Ms. Henley?
It's all extremely confusing to anybody who doesn't work with it as much as you do. And, you know, explaining the difference to the public of all of these interim agreements and term sheets and what's this project and what's that project gets very, very difficult. I just thought last week's meeting was extremely good. What was it, Wednesday? What did you call that? A, a public engagement workshop?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought it was one of the best I'd ever been to. It was, it was very well attended, the people were very energized, they, they participated. You know, so often we sit around those tables and you have a hard time drawing comments out of people, but people were really interested and really engaged. But they were only seeing one project. Would it be possible to have such a session showing all three of these projects that we're looking at at this point? Because, you know, I've kind of been asking for a while now that we had a, a vision of the whole so that we can see all of them. And, you know, we do call this, what are you calling this? The Central Bismack
Entertainment District.
District or something. They, they complement each other, they overlap and there are things about each one of them that overlaps, to say nothing of the funding that everybody gets confused on. And I think, as long as we just keep them as, and I know we have to do three separate things because they're separate people and everything involved, but is there some way we can, we can show everybody all of it together, show how it's gonna work, how the parking is gonna work for all of it, how the funding is gonna work for all of it? I, I just think if we look at it as a total at some point, it would really help everybody kind of keep it straight because if they just keep hearing about all these different projects and it's really confusing to me and to everybody else as well. So, if we could just do one with everything, I think it would be really helpful.
Yes, ma'am. I, I, I couldn't agree more with Barbara in terms of a comprehensive look, but one of the things we don't hear is no one talks about the opportunity cost of the allocation of debt against our available capacity that these projects take. So, when you're going to a consumer, which is the taxpayers, our employer, there are investors, they don't see, if I spend 100 and something million dollars of debt on this, given our debt capacity of X, that means these other things, be it flooding or school modernization, can't be done. Whereas if we say we're gonna pay all this stuff out of the tip fund by cash, well, then the opportunity costs are relatively zero. But when we, and I think just to look at the projects without understanding the real choice, the broader choices in context, which none of these workshops provide, you walk away saying, I like it, but I like ice cream, but when they tell me it's $10 a gallon or if I buy ice cream, I can't get bread for my kids or my house floods, well, then your answer might be different. So, I do think they're constructively and well-done, I don't take that away, but they are not comprehensive in communicating to the citizens the, what the choice represents in terms of what you can't have if you choose this. I think that's a piece that's missing. People, I just think people have to be fully informed and I think that's the part that's missing.
John, Eric.
Mr. Mayor, to that, to that point, we've, we've talked about it, we, we certainly talked about it at great length several years ago in terms of many different projects that were, had potential of being done and what would that do in terms of our bonding capacity and its impact on our, our credit rating. We, as far as I know, I haven't seen an update to that. I mean, there's a, a lot of the projects, those main projects that were in that mix that we've greenlit and, and actually started on. There's some in there that we've had refinements to in terms of their actual cost, some up and some down. And then there's some like light rail that is completely off the table and, of course, that was a, a big number that was in that potential debt capacity. So, you know, maybe, Mr. Mayor, we ought to have, you know, an update on, on where we are with that analysis and I know Patty's constantly working to jockey, you know, where those are and having those conversations with the credit ratings, but it, at least, at least to, to my point, I, I haven't seen those, those refined numbers.
I think we'd all like to see that.
Thank you.
Ms. Henley?
Well, I'm glad John talked about the funding because I forgot to. Because I think as a part of that presentation, we need to show people how it's all going to be paid for. But, you know, we, we've got a track record of this dedicated funding source for these tourist investment projects, a track record that's 25 years. And maybe it's time for us to kind of revisit it with our people so everybody understands that, you know, when it started, everybody was on board and knew about it. And then when we re-upped it kind of in 2000 when we did the major projects, you know, everybody knew what we were doing, but it's been a while. So we probably need to talk about it. But I think with this track record, we can show what are the kinds of projects, what are the projects we have spent this tourism investment money for? And were they successful? Did we get a return? You know, and so forth. We've got all of that data and I know that we get that reported in our budget, but again, we need to keep it simple and we need to pull it out for everybody to see. But as a part of this civic engagement thing, we could, we could show people how it's funded and, you know, when we got that spreadsheet a couple of weeks ago and we saw the, the money that would be accumulating and the very possible factor that we may be able to fund some of this with cash so that there is no debt. Because I do think the funding part of this has to be a continuous conversation. And like I say, with a 25-year track record, we've got something to really show it's not a hypothetical at this point, it's how's it been working and what have we done and, and has it paid off or, or not? So that's definitely a part of it.
Yes, John. On Barbara thing, interesting thing, we had 17 million visitor days, I think that's what we say roughly, I think that's the number, I think that's what I've heard. So I thought, wow, we have 450,000 residents, how many residence days do we have? 164 million resident days, that's a lot of resident days. So I hope when we go back, because this gets back to the discussion we had maybe two weeks ago, can't think when we had it, was about what's the allocation of money and the residents and the meal tax and where does it come from and what percentages? So 164 million meal days, if it's just an average of $5 a day, that's $48 million. That's a lot of money. That's 48 of 68, probably more than five. So I hope when we do that analysis, because I'm doing my own looking at stuff, you just need to remember we have 164 million resident days a year. That's a lot of days. And a lot of residents going to movies, a lot of residents eating out, a lot of residents bowling and golfing. So I don't know, the reality, when we see the analysis, we don't see the breakout, doesn't mean we shouldn't still spend toward these things, but I think we need to make sure that it passes the roughly right ROM test. When you say it's 30% and you look at those residence days, you're making a lot of conclusions that the proportions don't seem to support without a lot of rigorous analysis. I just share that as an observation because if someone brought that to my attention, I want to give them credit for it, wasn't my own idea, but it made a lot of sense. There's a lot of resident days, 164 million. Yes, John.
It was interesting, I did just have pulled the actual restaurant gross sales for all of the localities in Hampton Roads and Virginia Beach's per capita spending on, on meals is far over any other city. And, and really, they're all kind of in the same amount. But the big difference is that we do have six and a half million people that are coming from out of the city and are staying overnight for an average of 4.2 days and eating breakfast, lunch and dinner primarily in, in restaurants. And so I think it would be very interesting to normalize that and then be able to associate what is that lift? Because certainly we are one of the fittest cities in the country, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Absolutely.
And so I don't think, I don't think it's because we're eating a ton, more than our, the other localities. I think, I think that the, the reality, why our per capita spending on meals taxes is so much higher is because we have that, those additional people that are coming and spending money in our, in our restaurants. And I, and I think that we can actually come, there's a lot of different methodology, but I think that's a real easy one to be able to say, you know, Chesapeake is so similar in terms of their demographic, why are we spending on average almost $600 more per capita than the, the residents in Chesapeake?
And you're right, because I think when we did get that breakdown of the meal tax, I think it's 1.06% that we attribute up to 5.5% to tourists and that's what goes on the tip. But the 3.5% of the meal tax that goes into the general fund is a pretty big slug into the general fund and that accommodates for all of us locals who get to eat every now and then too. So, but I think in addition, we, to these taxes that are, that do go into the tip, we need to know how much real estate tax is paid by the central business district or central beach district, how much stormwater fee they pay. Because I think, you know, when everybody was all upset that we were going to spend some of this money down at the oceanfront for stormwater, they forgot that all of those people are paying the commercial rate, or at least on Atlantic Avenue are paying the commercial rate for stormwater fee, which is pretty hefty, I think. Of course, we have a lot of residents in there too, but how much does that area pay in their stormwater fee? And as well as all the taxes, the business taxes and so forth. So we really need to see the whole thing.
Anybody else? All right, thank you very much, Ron. That's right. Next item is city council liaison reports. Anybody have a report?
Well, there's an item on the agenda today that comes out of the deferred compensation treaty that I serve on. And I would recommend you, what is a very good, solid recommendation. I know Patty Phillips has done an excellent job talking around the various interest groups within the city to convince them that really this offers the lowest set of fees and therefore statistically the long, long-term, the highest rate of return on their money, which is our fiduciary responsibility. I'd like to recognize Dana, who's our legal counsel on that, for all his good work, but it is a solid recommendation and I would urge her adoption.
Yes, John.
Mr. Vice Mayor, it came to my attention, some of y'all may already know, but Oceana's 75th anniversary is coming up in the very near term. And obviously, you know, I think the city should be, you know, involved in terms of that celebration. And so it'd be nice if we could get an update at some point so that we can all share in that and, and find out what the appropriate role we should, we should have in that.
That'd be great. Yes, Rosemary.
A group of the Historic Preservation Commission is traveling to Richmond on Thursday and three, three students are going. And Mark Reed is getting a city van to take all of us up there. And I think there's 10 of us going all together. And we have an appointment to meet with the governor. And there is some historic tax credits legislation that's up for voting this year. And we're going to have the students talk to the delegates in the city about promoting this legislation. And so we're, we're real excited about going. And Jimmy Wood is going to be with us. There is also Preservation Virginia is doing a reception in the afternoon, we'll be staying for that, so.
Great, great idea. Yes.
I mentioned attending some of those sessions around the city on stormwater, but in addition to those, I know that the team is also addressing a lot of the boards and commissions. I've, I've heard two or three at some of the commissions that I'm liaison for. And it's just so informative. It's important that all of our people who are serving the city in any way, I think, have this knowledge about what all we're doing. Otherwise, you know, we get that silo effect, people don't realize what we're doing. Plus, I know that they're also making presentations to as many civic groups as we'll have them. So I think if anybody knows of a group who would be available to have this presentation, I think it's so important that, that the public stay involved. And a part of, of the work, of course, is some interaction to be able to let people, let them know where they see the problems and the roads that are impacted and so forth. So I hope that, you know, we will help them find some more places to speak because the more people hear this presentation, I think the better for all of us.
All right.
Sorry, Jessica.
Yes, Jessica.
I know, I'm sure all of you saw the Virginia Pilot article tonight, we're going to have some speakers about food trucks this evening. I did have an opportunity to reach out to, or to discuss it, to talk to one of the leaders of the organization. And they, they're going to raise some really fair points and what, how our ordinances are currently laid out and, you know, it's, it's really impossible to properly operate a food truck in Virginia Beach. And they're going to be asking for a steering committee and a council liaison. And I just wanted to make a suggestion that we create a committee under Bobby's process improvement.
We can do that.
And I would like to help with that. And so just wanted to give everybody a heads up-
A volunteer.
That's going to be happening. And I'm, it's a, it's a, it's a subject that is very close to my heart.
We have a volunteer.
Yes. So just heads up that they're going to be here tonight, so.
All right. City council comments, John.
I've been, I'm sure probably people do too, but I've been reading a lot of Denver, Chicago Tribune, Los Angeles Times, San Diego, because I'm really trying to understand Brookings and other people looking at this homeless issue and-
When do you sleep?
Not very much. But, but the point I want to bring up, because I think when staff's looking, I hope they're doing those same kind of abstract literature researches, but what brought to my attention, I think there's 53,000 homeless in Los Angeles. They spent over $100 million in the last four years on homeless and have made no dent. In fact, the problem is worse than when they started. My only point is this, it's not so much they didn't make a progress for lots of reasons, but understanding what they spent their money on, understanding why it didn't work. But it is clear that many people, their first thing is, well, let's do this, let's do this, let's do that. When you look around the community, what's San Diego, if you look in even in Denver and other places, those quote unquote, make a box, make an organization, make a subsidy, make an incentive, build a housing, isn't making a material difference in the homeless issue. So, so I just, I just, I know that's something that's on our plate to look at, but, and we look at these kind of things, but there's some, some huge issues. Fortunately, we don't have the housing shortage that the West Coast is facing. That's, that's a good thing. But I can just, if you're out there looking, you know, these are things that tend to happen there first, but move east, you know, and it just kind of builds. But I just invite, hope the staff's looking at those, those examples of what didn't work, but understanding why it didn't work as they bring forth stuff to say what we think we should do.
Anybody else for comments? All right, let's do the agenda review real quick here. Under ordinances and resolutions, anybody have any comments on those?
Item five, I'd like to ask for a deferral for these, the, it's item five, right? Hang on a second. Yeah, the approval of the sale of the school board property at North Witch Duck Road. I'm having a really hard time with this. I did a little bit of outreach to the public and the road is so overburdened as it, as it stands right now. And I really think that we have a unique opportunity with this being, well, school board owned property to potentially acquire it on the city side and, and adopt it into open space and not develop anything on it at all. Because I don't think, even with, I guess our present capacity or the present volume's 47,000 cars, the new volume will be 49,000 cars and even as the road as a six lane highway is going to be only 42,000. And that we're, we're basically improving the road to have service level D, I believe. And that, I mean, that road is atrocious, I drive on it every day, it's so hard to get on and off the interstate. I just don't, I think no development is better than any than-
All right, now, everybody understands that this, if we defer it, it affects the zoning item also. Yes, Ben.
I respectfully disagree with Jessica and the way that roads are rated is confusing. You think of a classroom as A, B, C, D and E. You know, a D road is operating at a very sustainable capacity. And so, you know, if that's the reason for deferral, that's no reason for deferral, in my opinion. I've spoken with several members on the school board. This is an excellent opportunity for the school to get rid of excess property. I think that this will be beneficial to the school system. I see no reason for a deferral.
I think normally, I don't really have a problem with the school board trying to get rid of their excess proper, property, but I don't think anybody who drives on that road thinks that road is operating-
I drive on that road every day.
I mean, during rush hour traffic, it takes you 30 minutes to get down it. I, I think that, I think-
Is that, do you have traffic numbers or are you just speculating?
I'm not speculating, I've driven down that road and taken-
Let me ask you a question. Okay. Is your issue with this particular ordinance selling the property or is your issue with the zoning item that follows?
My, my issue is that I think any development on this property is negatively impacts the road usage. And the, I'm fairly certain the sale of the property is contingent on the rezoning. So I'm, I'm fine with the school board trying to sell their property, I have a problem with it developing, permitting any development on the property.
All right, John.
My issue is I support what, what she's asking for, but I have a bigger concern just about the selling the property before we have seen the appraisal. The reason why I ask this, if you look at, one of it says that a gentleman was willing to pay 1.6 million for 2.65 acres or something close to that. If you divide that into the 10.6 acres, because that's the B2, is a B2 use, you'd get 6.5 million dollars at the B2 value. That's just saying the per acre cost. What am I going to say? Now, when you look at what they're willing to pay for the whole 10 acre parcel, which is now at a conditioned on a rezoning, which is apartments, and we've seen throughout the city that there is an excess or there's not sufficient demand to develop B2, that people are looking for other residential applications, we saw on Princess Anne Road. So obviously, that has a, should have a higher value in the marketplace because the return is there. I don't think that's an unfair economic logic. You would think that the valuation of the sale of the property would be higher. Now, maybe the appraisal explains that, but the answer that we received is we couldn't see the appraisal until closing, which means the property's been sold. I acknowledge that the school board has the right to sell their property. It's conditioned upon us, but we, but the school board doesn't own the property, the public owns the property and they're just stewards. And they're just like us, they have a fiduciary responsibility to get the highest and best value.
I tell you what, we're going to pull the item and we'll just have to vote on it out front. I think because we, we're going to have to go through this again once we get out to the formal session.
I'll say my comments.
I'm sorry, Rosemary.
I'll, I'll just say my comments.
All right, any other items? Everything else is okay on their ordinances?
We're put under nine, it's going to be nine B.
Well, the, the question is that Jim's raising is everybody's okay with option two, as I understand it, under nine, item nine, is that correct?
So nine, nine A, we're not going to vote on?
No, we're not going to vote on A, we're just going to vote on B.
So we don't have to put a, a formal no vote on A, we just are just pull?
No, we, we're just, when we read the, read the consent agenda, we're going to read item nine B.
I just want to understand.
All right, under planning, Consumer Properties LLC, Beach District, Mr. Earn.
No issues with that, Mr. Vice Mayor, if it's in, please.
There's a new disclosure for that.
I'm sorry.
There's a new disclosure that we got for that.
Yes, everybody see the new disclosure on that? It was at your, it was at your seat. Item two, Michael Benetti and Jeffrey Murphy, Prince Anne District, Ms. Henley.
Yes, but I hope this is the last one in that area because this is a private road. I had no idea it was going to be so many.
But you're okay.
All right, for this one, we'll-
Item three, HHVP2 LLC, Beach District, Mr. Earn.
Fine with it, Mr. President. I just have a question and John, maybe you can answer this. All right, this is based on a 1972 zoning and the conditional use permit that had conditions. And this is modifying one of those conditions. And they're going to remove a unit from the existing apartment complex. Sure?
That's what they proffered, so.
And that's, that's going to be doable? I mean, they're going to demolish one unit within the-
That's my understanding. And then make the will in order, so yeah, that's, that's my understanding.
Comfortable with that and you think that's going to really happen and really work?
That's what they said they're going to do in writing, so yeah. Should I have any reason, Ms. Smith, for?
It just sounds extreme.
The number of units will change. They'll- Create a duplex out of the existing single family, so it is rather unusual, but you know.
I know that's what it says, but I'm not sure that's what it's going to do.
Well, we'll check and make sure they do what we said.
You'll probably have some help from the North Beach Civic League to make sure that happens.
Item four, Franklin Johnston Group Management, I guess we'll have to pull that because of the other item. of the other item. Item five, Larry Garrison and Hilltop Investors LLC, Beach District, Mr. Earn?
Fine with that one, too, Mr. Vice Mayor. Consent, please.
Item six, Luciana Crespo and the Bruce W. and L and B Gallup Joint Revocable Intervivo Trust Agreement, Beach District, Mr. Earn?
I'm fine with that. Thank you, Mr. Rosemary.
And item seven, Lynn Haven Mall LLC, Rose Hall, Ms. Kane?
Yes, please.
I didn't vote for the sign change, but the signs changed and made, and they're eligible. I'm voting for the project.
Thank you, John.
All right. We'll now go to the motion for the closed session. The chair will entertain a motion recessing to a closed session pursuant to the exemption from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3. Beach District, Princess Anne, Princess Anne, Princess Anne, and Beach District. Legal matters: consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting adversely affect the negotiating or lit, litigating posture of a public body. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7: possible opioid litigation. Personnel matters: discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1: council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. May I have a motion?
Second.
Call a roll, Madam Furman.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Danabour?
Aye.
Ms. Tatta?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Irvin?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?